Not get to it last time. It's a 2023 retirement group. And we had invited them last week, but I didn't know if they were able to get in the room because of the crowd. But I did promise I would read this to the crowd today. So 2023 retirements, Barb Roulet, 20 years, Alan Duka, 27 years, Linda Goransky, 23 years, Michael Kennedy, 21 years, Gregory Pyle, 35 years, Deborah Sharp, 23 years, Joseph Boat, 21 years, Dave Maurice, 19 years, Eric Colitas, 25 years, and Jeremy Quinn, 17 years, and Tracy Craighead, seven years. So let's give them a round of applause for all their service at the township. Thank you. We will be sending them some certificates. Okay, great. Thank you. So today's meeting is going to be on the waste hauler bid presentations, and I will pass this over to Director Norwood to lead us off.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. As you know, today is the date and time set for our study session where we're going to hear your presentations from three successful bidders who are proposals. As you know, our waste contract comes up this next summer. So we're trying to get a jump on this because we need a lead time. The contractors need a lead time to get equipment and staff up for handling Canton's trash hauling. Because you know, we have 29,000 stops. It's a large community. We're not necessarily on a grid pattern, so we have some unique challenges. So we're going to start tonight with Titan. I'm going to turn it over to them. You can see, you guys are all set. You can all get started. You have approximately 15 minutes or so presentation, and the board will have any questions or comments to make afterwards. That's okay. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Happy holidays and appreciate the opportunity to be here today. A little bit about Titan and our team. I'm the CEO currently, and we also have John Tadoneo, who is our municipal expert, along with Jim Hartley, who handles all our software and programming. You know, basically, the cut to the chase is we pride ourselves on service. We know your community very well. We've been fortunate enough to pick up your trash in the past when we were RES. And, you know, again, we pride ourselves on the service. When we take over a community, our philosophy is to go in with extra trucks, extra equipment. We like to go in with new equipment and provide the services that are needed. I've been fortunate enough to start up 65 communities on startups, and our CEO Glenn Miller has started up over 100 communities in his lifetime. So we're familiar with the service. We know it's expected. Our goal is obviously, we rate ourselves, we pride ourselves on you getting zero calls. We understand that that's a rating system that you guys use, which obviously, you know, we have to focus on and make sure that you aren't getting any complaints or missed pickups. One other thing that we also do is we don't like to argue with the residents. You know, so we came up with a program that basically calls it for missed pickups or late sets. That way, if there's an issue, we just go back and get it. But we document it in real time of, you know, what exactly transpired, how did it happen, how was it missed? Document it for you. So if it is an ongoing problem, you're aware of it. But our philosophy is don't argue with the resident. If it's out there, we're going to pick it up. You know, we will take anything that's at the curb unless you direct us otherwise. And, you know, again, that's our model. It always has been our model, is service. And obviously, good new equipment. You don't want rough-looking equipment or issues that you're having with other trucks breaking down, and then you've got trash laying for days or for hours at a time when it's supposed to be picked up timely. Our job is to make sure that it's picked up timely and as early as possible and as convenient. We don't want you to get any calls. That's our biggest issue. So basically, if it's at the curb, we take it, no excuses. Our philosophy is when others say no, we say yes. We'll go get it. We'll take care of it. We are dedicated to providing you with the best service and making sure that it's picked up in a timely manner. You know, we stand behind our service so much that if you want to put a clause in there for termination after 90 days, if you're not satisfied with the service, we'll honor that. So we're open to, you know, ideas that you have to make sure that your service is taken care of the way it should be. John, anything you want to add?
Yeah, just a couple of things that I could add. I think we were going to make sure that you're aware, in the bid spec, we added electric vehicles. We were committed to, we've been researching electric through the MAC organization. We've demoed trucks. We're satisfied with the results. And there's a long lead time on the vehicles, so it's going to be 2025 before we can have all the trucks that we would order for this contract in place. But we would order new diesels. Every truck that we'll start the contract with will be brand-new. And then replaced again with electric vehicles as those roll into our lineup. I wanted to talk too about the bullet point called the end-of-day roundup management. We employ the end-of-day roundup. It's important. In this case, there'll be approximately seven routes per day for MSW, for example. At the end of a contract or end of the day's route day, when the driver finishes, he or she will, in many cases, companies will let their drivers just head back to the ranch, fill up, do the post trips, and leave for the day. We're different at Titan in that we will use a roundup technique always, every day. We come into town together, and we continue until every stop is picked up at the end of the day. If a route finishes, they're reassigned to another route that's still in progress. And that continues until every stop is picked up, and then and only then do we all leave again together. Next thing I want to talk about is how do we handle missed pickups? It's a term that we all are familiar with. Oftentimes, people call them late putouts. But when there's a dispute, and this will be a segue to Jim Hartley here in a moment, we have the technology on our vehicles. Each is GPS-equipped, but also everyone will have a number of cameras, six cameras at least, on each vehicle that will allow us to, if we have stop, our address hypothetically 123 says, "I was missed today." As Jeff said, our strategy is always to go back and pick it up anyways. But we can also work with you and the resident to say that at 8:23 this morning, we picked up stop, or address 122. A minute later, we picked up 124 on both sides of you. And when we drove by your house, here's your driveway, there's nothing put out. And it's not trying to start an argument with anybody, but just letting everyone know that we track every individual service. We do that not just with GPS, but with video footage as well. And that helps to make sure that in months to come, people are more likely to put out in advance and know that the technology is available. Jim's going to talk briefly about that, so thank you for your time.
... members of the board and committee members. Jim Hartley, I became part of the team about 10 years ago when we were handling the 65-plus communities that we built out.
Thank you. Just to remind, if you get closer to the microphone also, that would help us hear. Trevor, you getting that feedback?
Okay. So about 15 years ago, I was brought into local government, Michigan's third-largest city, to provide performance measurement. Had not been done before, and I had no tool to do that. And I sat on your end of the table at that time as a community leader. And I had to go find a mechanism to track performance at the community level, 26-plus different departments. Five years later, I was brought onto Jeff's team 10 years ago, where we built out this technology to be used in a municipal environment because that's what we provide. We provide municipal services. And what we found was, as you grow, you have to be able to track the requests that came in. Now, keep in mind, you're going to have several companies here that are going to tell you that we can all pick up the trash. I think somewhat reasonably, we can. The question is, what happens when we don't pick up the trash? Or when there's a perception that we didn't pick up the trash? And it shouldn't be down to, all of a sudden, your phones start ringing. Oh geez, there's a problem. Our system, that we're dedicated to not only give to you, but use ourselves from a management perspective, is our Titan Citizen Responder, which is powered by Q Alert. And the system works in an all-inclusive environment. It's not just, we have our own system and you don't get to see it. This system that we're proposing for you, including, and I'll get to that in a minute, the proposed Citizen Responder, or in your case, it would be the, we just proposed, we just made up. You can call it whatever you want, but Canton Connect, which would be the ability for you to track all service-level requests within the municipality. Barking dogs, broken sidewalks, non-emergency police issues, anything that needs to be tracked that you don't have a system in place for. But within that same sandbox, you'd also receive service requests for solid waste, bulk pickups, things like that. This is where the ball doesn't get dropped, is because not only do we use the system, you're going to use the system as well, and we're all going to be working, playing in the same sandbox. And that includes your resident. So if your resident makes a request, they can make a request through several different methods. They can actually track their own response. And then, if your phone still rings after that, I think we've covered all the bases. But what we're here to do is to try to convince you that not only do we have the passion and service experience to pick up the trash in a standard environment, but we can also have elevated levels of service that will ensure that you can track and the performance levels that you have built into your contract are adhered to. So these are some of the communities that I personally installed throughout our area. Some of them have their own little names, Southfield Solutions, PT Link for Plymouth Township, City of Novi, St. Clair Shores, City of Warren. City of Warren's been there for 15 years now. And what's nice about this system is that we're offering, and here would be an example of a branded app that we would give you at our expense to be able to track progress. You can take pictures. We can even, when we have an issue of non-compliance in the field, maybe Mrs. Jones continuously doesn't properly bundle her trash or what have you, we can, as Jeff and John have made very clear, we're going to pick it up anyway, but we can take a picture of it and send it back to your code enforcement, if that's something that you should want to have. So it's a bidirectional flow of information. And I would contend to you that no other company is capable of either doing that because they don't have a complete cycle of communication between the township and their system, or if they do have a system like this, they may not have the willingness to actually allow you to play in that sandbox. And that's the challenge, I think, that you need to ask yourself. And again, this is just, you can scan that with your phone. It'll take you to a live site if you want to check it out a little bit more. But the beautiful thing about it is that you have full transparency. You don't have to wait until a resident calls you to find out later that there was a problem. We're going to know. Your DPW people, all of your township officials are going to know, and our advanced management teams are going to know at the 24th hour, the 23rd hour, that we've got an issue that wasn't resolved, and we'll get it resolved. And that's our insurance policy to you and our offer to you. So basically, the extra levels of service that were mentioned here is a commitment that we're making to you out of the gate in addition to our advanced technology equipment. It's a customer service platform that not only can be used by us, but it can also be used by you and your residents. So it ensures full transparency in an environment where you don't always get that. And unless there's any other questions about it, I did also want to mention quickly on sustainability issues. Track IQ is a technology that we have, it's part of Titan Environmental. Food digestion that can be employed into facilities as big or small as needed. Start to get into food waste. Some of the more advanced sustainability issues that even though you're not asking for that right now, maybe two or three years down the line, you'd want to have a partner that's capable of moving in and providing that level of service and being a leader, along with your leadership, in areas of sustainability that haven't been explored yet. And that's what Track IQ is all about, Recoup. We can speak more on that if you have any questions.
Any board questions? Let's start. Okay. So I have a couple, then I'll start with. Could you explain a little bit more? So we do have a composting program that we work with, with another company. Could you explain your food waste technology? How does that work?
The digesters? So there's waste-to-energy systems. That's not what this is. That would be where you take food waste and you turn it into methane, renewables. That's something that's much larger scale. Eventually, you could do maybe a curbside program or something. Our digesters work on things like cruise ships and facilities. In other words, the food never leaves the facility. It goes directly into the digester. And there's enzymes that then break it down into, basically, a watery, organic waste that can just be washed right through the drain. So it's no longer food waste. I think the statistic is roughly 30% of all landfill use is food waste. And we can, our technology can be put in, you know, any kind of city or township facilities, just something that we can offer you down the road, because that's what we do, in addition to municipal solid waste.
So would you have the residents put buckets in front of their house? Or would they take it to a different site, and then you collect it?
The logistics of that would all have to be explored. That would be a preference on your part. The contract we're discussing right now is for standard waste and recycling. The digesters can be put in facilities, or we could do curbside, as you mentioned, some sort of a curbside collection, or you could have them bring it to a common facility. It's very rare here in Michigan, if at all, that that kind of exploration of food waste is being discussed. So that discussion is wide open. We just want you to know that we're on the cutting edge of that technology.
What about yard waste?
Yard waste collection, or?
Currently, you know, as far as the yard waste, are you talking about in like a digester fashion or just disposing of it?
So, no, like the grasses, the grass leaves during the fall and spring?
Yeah, we have, there's two different compost facilities that we can take the yard waste and the grass clippings to. One's located in Detroit, and the other one is in Ann Arbor.
Okay. So you'll probably hear a lot from me because I get a lot of calls. So let me ask you this thing. So customer service, you talk about that. One thing is, let's say you have somebody call in, and they're going to do one of the communities, one of the part of the community. Do you let us know beforehand so we can let residents know? Or, I mean, you talked about your communication app. Is that after the fact or before the fact? If you know that you're going to miss a neighborhood because somebody called in that day?
Well, that's interesting that you mention that. Our system actually has the ability to draw a polygon around a bridge that's down or a snow emergency. And then that would alert anyone who's about to make a call or make a request for service that there's a specific issue in their area at that time. It's very rare that that happens. Most issues of collection, quite frankly, are usually late sets. But there are times when people's issues get missed. Most importantly, and I think this is part of your question, we can let you know that Mrs. Jones didn't put her items out, or maybe that they weren't bundled properly. And maybe they're 16-foot two-by-fours, and we just aren't going to be able to get that in. We can actually take a picture of that and send it to your people to let you know ahead of time. And it would also let our customer service people know, so that when Mrs. Jones calls, we can actually tell her, "Well, Mrs. Jones, the reason we couldn't service your item today was because such and such."
Well, and just to add to that too, what's nice about this system is not only will our customer service people see it, our route supervisor will see it, and you will see it. So everybody's seeing it real time. Everybody's seeing the exact same thing that's posted, so it's not like it's being, you know, a third party gets it and they change it. Everything, everybody sees exactly what is posted the first time.
So if a customer did call because their trash pickup was missed, how long would they be put on hold? Do you have somebody, an actual person, that answers the phone?
Well, we employ a distributed call center, not just a in-person call center. So what that allows to happen using current technology is that the calls can actually bounce to people, even people who might reside in this community. People who maybe can't report to work in a traditional sense because they're taking care of an infirm family member or something. That person could be employed by us to answer calls, take them down. It's a very simple process. And if we have time later, I'd be happy to show you the system, a live version of the system, so you can actually see how the intake works.
So to answer your question, yes. We will have, there will always be somebody that they're speaking to, and there won't be long haul, there will not be, you know, if we put somebody on hold, they're not going to be on hold for 5, 10, 15 minutes at a time.
Or 45 minutes.
And we also have a text message capability as well, system, so you can actually call and text, kind of similar to what Delta does, if you're familiar with that app.
Okay. So are you also offering carts for both recycling and trash pickup?
There's, I believe, there's two different bids that we proposed. One is currently, as it's being picked up currently. And then the second proposal is offering carts at our, basically that we would supply the residents on the trash side. So yes.
Okay. So how confident are you that you'll be able to complete daily collection of yard waste, recycling, and garbage?
I'm an ops guy, and, you know, I pride myself on service. And I could tell you that, you know, again, I mentioned this earlier. If there's any type of, I'll put our service up if there's any type of guarantee that you want to put in the agreement that basically states that you're not happy with the service that we're providing, we will amicably bow out of that. That's how confident we feel that we'll be able to take care of your community like we have in the past when we started up. I mean, I, we, it's important to us that we provide you the service that you're looking for and that you're requesting.
Okay. How about employee retention? Do you have a high percentage of employee retention? And are they competitively compensated so they will stay with your company? Because we do see a lot of job hopping.
Yes, and that's a really, really good question. You know, obviously, since COVID's happened, there's been a lot of trying to keep drivers and trying to keep loader operators and garage personnel and office staff employed. And if you do employ them, a lot of them like to try to stay home and work from home because it's just, it's our world now. But to answer your question, we've been very fortunate to get some very good employees. Our retention has been very, very good for the past 12 months, knock on wood. And we've been very fortunate to hire very, very good loyal employees that are looking to grow our company and be a part of it and see where this thing goes.
Okay. How often are your trucks and equipment serviced to make sure they're in top condition? Because a lot of our residents are getting new roads, and they don't like oil leaks on them.
We look at, we have mechanics touch our trucks monthly. So they're always being looked at. They're always being inspected. We have GPS units that basically let us know how long the truck's been running, how many miles are on it, when it's due for services, oil changes, greasing, all that nature. And we don't like to keep anything that's older than five, six years old. So, you know, we are, I'd like to believe that we're really on top of our maintenance program pretty well.
So if a truck does experience a hydraulic leak or oil, how quickly will it get resolved? And what measures are taken to clean it up?
We will dispatch our, we either have a company that we can hire, or we'll bring our own people that can supply, you know, the floor dry, and we'll clean that up and bring a sweeping company out as well. You won't see that truck back in your community until it's 100%, you know, back on track. We'll have spares. And that's kind of why we like to go in a community for a startup for the first two or three months with extra three or four trucks, in case we do experience that. It doesn't hinder the, it doesn't hinder the residents from getting their trash picked up, and it's still, you know, getting, you know, you're not going to get those calls, basically.
Are those electric vehicles? And you had said something. Are they in service now? Yeah, in a couple of years? 25, okay. So what about if there's damaged carts? So if you do pick up carts and they're damaged, what would you do to resolve that with the resident?
So again, if it's something that obviously we caused and we were rough with the equipment, we're going to replace it at no cost to the resident. If it's something normal wear and tear, it's something that we can discuss with you on what's the best action for that. But at the end of the day, we're going to make sure that the resident gets a cart.
And we have route supervisors onsite all day that will have extra parts and are able to service these items in real time. They'll be able to respond with their iPads in real time and get that fixed or, you know, same thing with cart deployments. Same system. Same system goes in, does the cart deployment. Same system would track any need that a resident has, and it would be handled as quickly in real time as possible.
Yeah, just to add to that, yeah, we will actually have a dedicated supervisor to your city, and only your city, that will check in with whoever you want in the beginning of the day and at the end of the day. That way, he's resolving the issues he had the day before to make sure that if there were any issues, he would address them. And then at the end of the day, for that particular, that same day issue. So it's basically, he'll check in with you in the morning and at the end of the day.
Okay. We also hold six Canton cleanups each year for residents to drop off garbage, recycling, and a small amount of hazardous waste. These cleanups are particularly important to your renters who may not have access to curbside recycling collection. If chosen, would your company be able to provide this service?
Yes, we will. Actually, I'm sorry, nothing to interrupt you. We have a local transfer station in Canton Township that is local for the residents to, we could utilize that service for.
Would you also be able to bring yard waste back to the community for fertilizing gardens after it's been composted in your yards, like once a year?
Are you referring to after the composting process has been done?
Yes.
Well, that would be arranged through the facility that we would drop the compost off at. And I'm, it's basically, I thought it would just be an arrangement.
Yeah, just, yeah, we could arrange that, start the trucking side, yes.
Okay. Does the board have any questions? Diane?
My question is about the carts. What is the cost of the cart if a resident has to replace a cart? Or if by chance, they're a new resident and they need a new cart? What is the cost of your carts?
I believe, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's $75 per cart, for a 96-gallon cart.
Okay. And then, because I'm the treasurer, and a lot of times, new residents come in and they need to purchase a cart and have a hard time right now. Do you have a number they can call? Because right now, what happens is we, you know, we give them the number. They pay for their cart, and then they call, and the company delivers the cart right now. What would your process be if the resident did want? Do we collect the funds, or how do you handle that?
So basically, I mean, again, we can set that up any way you prefer. I'm assuming you probably don't want to be involved in that process unless you have to be. So the calls can come into our office, or they can actually go on our website and order it that way. That'd be set up. And basically, once the order comes in, we'll deploy it the next day.
Okay.
With our supervisor.
Sometimes the same day, you'd be surprised.
Sometimes the same day, yeah.
If we're already delivering one down the street, you'd be surprised. Some people are amazed that suddenly it shows up the day that they requested it.
Okay, but within a few days, they would get it.
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
So how far do you have to travel for your, do you have a local facility somewhere with your waste?
From where we park our trucks?
Yeah, from Canton.
Approximately 25 minutes, 25 to 30 minutes.
And I think Anne Marie had asked about, we have like a kind of a compost program here in the community where we have, like, we collect it at certain center points in the community. We have small compost bins at our home, and we drop it off. And at the end of the year, we take the, like, you know, the composted soil back for gardening. Like, would you be able to provide something like that, a service?
Kind of goes back to what we talked about, right?
Yeah, sure. Well, again, compost is created with multiple different materials, and it goes to a facility. So are you referring to maybe us trucking it back and leaving it?
No, we... No, we, we have it at our DPW, right? Like, yeah, at our local DPW, we have an option for people to collect the compost.
Yes, yep, with, yeah, I misunderstood, yeah, we could actually do that.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm not sure who my first question's for. I don't know if David is for you, or Anne-Marie, or, or for you. But no matter who we go with, if we choose a different provider than we have now, what happens with the old carts at all of our homes? Okay, so we, not replacing the old, old carts. Gotcha. Okay, good to know. Your Canton Connect application, your app, is that something the residents use as well as your people and our people?
Absolutely. It'll be embedded on your, on your website, on our website, and there'll be a mobile app that you'll be able to have residents download on Google or Apple. And they'll be able to download it. They don't have to register. It's not one of those things where it's cumbersome. They can quickly cite a particular issue, report it. And again, these aren't just, you know, people are less likely to download an app to do one thing or two things. We're, we're going to allow them by providing you with your own version. And again, that's just a proposed name, I, you know, forgive, forgive me for my, my, my basic, but you, it'll allow you to give residents the ability to not have to be on hold with anybody. Most people now are sophisticated enough to do that. And they can, they can do other things. They can look at parks and recreation issues. They, this isn't just a one-sided app. And we're, we're providing this to you without having you have to go out to RFP, and it'll be embedded on your website. And it, and again, it'll go directly to the responsible department. And if it's us, then it's, then it's us, rather than just becoming a web form.
Okay, so I guess my question, Anne-Marie, is like, we probably need Victor, our ITI director, to take a look at it as well and see how it might integrate in some of the plans that he has for our community, whether it's a good front end for us to utilize. I noticed we could report other things, like you said. One thing I'd be interested in is being able to report, like you say, potholes and then even sidewalk issues. Does it have like geo-locating?
Yes.
So, okay, so.
Yeah, I was going to show that to you briefly if we had time, but it's parcel-based. So we, just for demonstration purposes, I downloaded the Wayne County parcel layer because I, your, your Canton layers are, are private, but I'm sure once we, you know, get on board, we, we will then have all of your assets. We can then integrate with those, whether it's the days of the week app, so people can tell what day of the week their service is, all kinds of issues just by dropping a pin on a map. It'll also give you underlying data. And I believe in the, in the pre-meeting, we discussed possible billing, difference, different billing options. And not that we want to do that, I don't think anybody does, it's a big can of worms. But if we did, we would want it to be parcel-based. We need to know who we're servicing, you know, who the owners are, that kind of thing. And with this program, when it drops a pin on that particular parcel, using that, that technology, the underlay data, it'll tell us everything we need to know about that parcel. If it's a vacant lot that maybe something was dumped on, we would know that too. I don't know if you ever build, do bill backs and things like that. We've thought of all these municipal-related things. And again, I spent five years in, on, you know, basically your side of the table, so I understand those issues.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the information. I have a few questions. To follow up on what you said about employee retention, do you have a retention rate that you could share?
Well, I would say, prior to these 12 months that we've experienced, it was probably 70, 75% just because it was tough to find, you know, a, a group of, of good guys that were looking to actually stay somewhere instead of just jumping around so much because we had a shortage of drivers and mechanics for a while. I would say in the last 12 months, we're probably about 90, 95%. We've got a very good retention.
Do you have data to back that up?
Yes, absolutely.
If you could share that with, with us, I'd appreciate that. I'm also wondering, I, I think if I understood correctly that you would be, if you got the contract, you would be buying trucks for Canton.
Right.
So with your, your current rate, your current fleet, can you give us an idea of the average age of the trucks?
I would say, we've got two different types of services that we're currently offering. We've got Western Stars, where our heavy haul, heavy duty. Those are, I would say approximately 2019 is the average. And then on our, our roll-off fleet, those are 2022s on an average. And I can back that up as well.
Okay, that would be good. And then with the, the app, the Canton Connect, or whatever we.
Whatever you want to call it.
Whatever we call it. You said that there's the ability to take photographs. Is that the, the cameras on the trucks taking photographs or?
Same. The cameras, the cameras on the trucks are, are recording events live as they happen, and you'd have to query them to, to see. So like, drop a pin at a particular house and, and know what happened at that location, which is easily, easily done through the GPS and the, and the video. The pictures that I'm talking about are native to a mobile device, so.
So ones that residents take.
Take a pile or something.
So ones that would be uploaded into the?
Instantaneously.
Okay.
Customer service people know what the field people are doing. You would see all of those things live instantaneously. So it's something that, and then that back and forth, I mentioned, sometimes we can report things back to you so that your different departments, code enforcement, what have you, can, can actually maybe go out and proactively try to do something about an issue. It's possible with the system that we have in place. Again, we're all playing in the same sandbox, and I don't believe there's any other systems out there that'll allow you to do that. And if there are, they probably should have been offered to you to begin with.
So do you have any company policies on, on the use of the cameras?
Well, it wouldn't be, you might talk about the city officials or city workers.
No, I'm talking about Titan.
Well, our, our supervisors would take pictures of, before and after pictures, for instance, if there was a special request for bulk pickups. Or if there was something hindering the ability to get the job done, we would take a picture of that. So now, if Mrs. Jones calls back, our customer service person can be looking at that same picture and say, well, the reason we weren't there, ma'am, is because, you know, there was a Mayflower moving truck parked in front of your house, or something to that degree.
Yeah, I mean, to kind of answer your question, I, I'm going to use this tool as measuring our drivers and our supervisor. So if there's whatever reason, if our drivers or our supervisor's not documenting anything that's supposed to be, that, let's say you're getting the call on and we're not, we don't have any, any record of it, we're going to, obviously, we can go back and look and see if customer service put anything in, if the supervisor put anything in. I mean, either way, regardless, we're going to, we're going to obviously go back and take care of the issue, whatever it is. But that's kind of what we use, going back to what Jim said, everybody's kind of seeing the exact same thing. And if something's not being done on our end, we're going to know it because you're getting the call and there's no documentation on what happened, or any pictures.
Are you referring to like appropriateness of pictures?
Yes.
Okay. Well, anyone who takes an inappropriate picture will be fired immediately.
100%, yeah.
I, I don't know.
We don't condone, if that's, I misunderstood your question. No, if there's something that was used inappropriately, yeah, there's, we have a zero dollar.
Do you have ways of documenting who's viewing the pictures? Viewing them?
Well, you, you, township officials, our management team would be the only people viewing pictures.
It can't go outside of that. It's, it's within that program.
Yeah, let me, let me also say, there are systems like this that let the public get involved. We do not do that. Your business is between your resident and you. We're not trying to open it up to, you know, everybody who's got a complaint's going to start chiming in on it. They're not, it's, it's, the business is between the resident and you and us.
Well, isn't it fair, Jim, that they're restricted unless they're given access?
Yeah, you're not going to be, so nobody in the public is going to necessarily see. Your business is between the resident and your community leaders. And, and when we're providing those services, it's between the three of us.
And our, our supervisors do not take their laptops home. They keep them in the office. So the document, if there is something that's, you know, if you're concerned about, it stays in our office. They get it the next morning, they go out, but they don't take the equipment home with them.
If 15 years ago, when I first deployed this, there were people asking, well, what happens if little Johnny is sitting at home and wants to put in some inappropriate thing? And we all kind of looked around at each other like, well, jeez, and think of that. But I can tell you that all these years later, I haven't really seen that happen. You know, but I, is there any example that you could, you're?
I could make up a whole bunch of ones, but I mean, I'm hoping this would never happen. What if, what if an employee of either organization decided they wanted to know when people were at home? And so they were looking at the footage to see when cars were there?
Oh, well, again, they'd have to look pretty deeply to know that that was happening. Service request is specific to that individual. So unless there was some pre-planned scheme or something.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think it's very remote, but I worry about privacy, so.
Absolutely. And, you know, the police department, it's, it's all foible information as well, once it's in the public domain. And the police department has full access to, if they're, to conduct an investigation of anything that was taken. There's a full audit trail of everything, everyone who touched it.
That's what I was wondering about, is the audit trail.
Absolutely. So if, you know, the call comes into our customer service and, you know, one of our customer service people puts it in, it marks who that person is.
Okay.
The, the person in the field, it, when they chime in, it's their user ID. Management gets involved. It's, if a, if a township official gets involved and they put a comment or a picture, it's all audit, very easily auditable.
Okay.
And again, I can do a separate, maybe, presentation of the system to show you how that works, but that's, that's, it's fully audible, auditable.
Okay, all right. Oh, and so my, I think my last question maybe is, you had mentioned when compost was complete at the, at whatever facility you take it to, you said, I think you said Detroit or Ann Arbor. Once that's complete and completely composted, finished, if we wanted you to bring it back, you had mentioned that was the possibility to truck it back, but would, would that be at an extra fee?
I think I'd be willing to work with the township on that. It depends on how often that occurred. If it was a, a one-time here and there, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't charge for that. But if it was something that was happening several times a week, it might be, because it'd be a cost for us to truck it back and forth. But again, if it was here and there for special events, we'd love to, to just, you know, offer that to you as a, as a free service.
Okay.
You know, Jeff built Titan off of a trucking company, not related to municipal waste during a time when they were in and on compete in municipal waste. But the trucking continued on, so we actually have higher levels of trucking that we can be employed. Are you referring to like, once, like, maybe in the springtime, you come and dump a pile where the residents can come and take some? Yeah, that shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, we could do that. It's no problem.
It's like wood chips and things, yeah, shouldn't be a problem.
And we can, we can actually stage it wherever you prefer.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Summer?
Thank you for the information. Just a couple of quick questions. The first one is on the app. Would you pay for the maintenance and update of that, of that system?
Yes. I personally deployed this system in all the places that you, that I showed you. And what would happen is they, they update, there's all, all updates happening constantly. And I, over the last 15 years, I've seen some amazing stuff get updated. We are going to cover the cost of not only the, the yearly service of the system, which would run roughly, if you probably went out to RFP just for a, a citizen request management system like this, maybe for this, a community this size, about 30,000 a year. We'll pay for the upgrades, we'll pay for the development of the app, which is a one-time fee. And again, it comes with, you know, that kind of splash screen, all that would be built in. It's fully customizable where you can, again, if you have park programs and things like that, and you want to have a button to push for that, or if somebody needs a particular service, order a cart, it can all be built into this system. And we, we, our commitment is to pay for all of that, for the duration of the contract. We believe that that, you know, to be honest with you, our dirty little secret is, if people are using this system, that's one less phone call that we have to take, it's one less phone call that you have to take. So it, it improves services all the way around. So it's really a perfect way, as they say, good fences make good neighbors. Well, this would be the same version of that. We want to open everything up to you. We believe that learning when we have a problem makes us better. We don't want to kind of hide everything in our own little portal that we keep to ourselves. We want you to be part of it, and we want all of your community leaders to have access to it, so that you're not just fielding angry phone calls.
Thank you. My next question, and I think Anne-Marie or Dave, this is directed at you. When we first negotiated the current solid waste contract, we did not include apartments. And there are far more apartments in the community now than there were then. And many of the apartments feel like they're more like condos instead of in a typical apartment building. Would there be room to add apartments to this contract?
We didn't put it.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. And even adding to that, I mean, businesses are important too, businesses and schools. So we've been probably very open about the landfill here. We have less than 10 years, if that. I spoke to them the other day, they said, you, you aren't going to come near 10 years. So it's important to educate the residents and businesses and apartments and condos about this. So do you have an education program that could help with that? And, or do you have a business outreach program or apartment condo program that could help bring these people into recycling, composting?
Yes. We have a, we have an internal system, but we also use Recollect, which allows us to provide direct communication with your residents. They even have like educational games and things that they play with people to make sure that they understand recycling. Let's, let's face it, even those of us in the industry are very often a little confused about what you can do with certain materials. This is, we, we would provide that to you, the ability to educate the, the customer or the, the resident. We brought up food waste. You know, maybe we won't fill that landfill up as fast if we employ tactics that will reduce unnecessary burdens on the landfill, something we can start thinking about anyway. And we can also, the digesters can be available to businesses. They can be as small as a washer or dryer, put in the back of a restaurant, or a banquet facility, or a fire station, or what have you. So these are things we can start talking about right away because we're at the cutting edge of that technology.
Anyone else? Any questions? All right, well, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you, appreciate the time.
We'll hold public comment, um, public comment, Dan. We'll have public comment at the end, questions at the end. They're, they're going to be here still, Dan. They'll be here, they're going to be here. You guys are staying? They're going to be here. You can ask them at the end. Okay, who's next? Okay, who's next? Is that what not working, Trevor? Is it, Trevor, is that what not working? Is that not working well? You can, oh, great. Oh, good, okay.
Guys, ready? Good evening, everyone. I'm Todd Stamper. I'm the CEO and the founder of Priority Waste. Merry Christmas, happy holidays to everybody, and thank you for having us out. Priority Waste was born about almost six years ago based on a need. I spent a lot of time on the buying side, which you guys are faced with right now. I understand this is the first time you guys may have done this in thirty years, so it can be a nerve-wracking process, but it can also open your eyes to a lot of new things that are available. I managed auto plants globally. I'm a rough carpenter by trade. I've always been an entrepreneur. Six years ago, when there were some changes in the market, I had an auto plant call me and say that the garbage company didn't show up, and it didn't look like they were coming out, and I was faced with twenty-four thousand dollars a minute for shutting down an auto plant line as the manager of that facility. Within forty-eight hours, we went out and, eh, maybe, maybe seventy-two hours, we went out and bought a small company, and we, we bought it to internalize the hauling. And after watching the way this, this, the business is done, we kind of noticed it was a little bit archaic. Technology wasn't a big piece of it. You heard a little bit about, about technology today, and that technology has stayed, it's been around for about fifteen years. And we kind of looked at the different operations in the business and how things can be done, and kind of looked at the technology and how the technology at the time asks so much of the customer. And at the end of the day, we have to remember that me as a homeowner, you as a homeowner, we'd like to see a nice clean truck go down the road. The gentleman, like they did in nineteen fifty, wave at you and smile, pick up your garbage, not miss it. And if you do have a problem, actually be able to call their office. Somebody answers the phone and can take care of your problem in a, in a very short time. So when we first started the business, we knew that a lot of companies were using cameras as a punitive issue, and employees didn't like them. They thought Big Brother was watching them. So when we started hiring employees, we knew in the first couple of years, we weren't gonna be able to load cameras in a truck because it was a big problem for the people because larger corporations had been using them as a punitive product, punishing for seat belts if they, you know, did something wrong. So after Priority grew, and I believe we had maybe fifteen, eighteen municipalities, we, about eighteen months ago, integrated Priority Integrated Technologies. This is a live picture of, of the pit at our corporate office. What we were able to do is kind of like air traffic control is with a pilot, we created a position called a logistic driver coordinator. Those are the folks that are sitting in front of those, in front of those computers. Because like the software that we had just seen and software that was out there, it's all still recorded, you have to go back and see it, you don't have somebody watching it. Every one of our trucks, the six cameras they do have on them, four are watching the roads. One has artificial intelligence, and it's telling us what you are throwing out. And the other camera is learning as it goes on. So as technology's gone on, we have AI. So we have AI cameras on our trucks that are, that are reporting back to our pit. Can we be more efficient for less carbon footprint? Are we missing stops? Imagine driving past a stop. Our cans happen to be yellow, you, the city can pick whatever color they want. So if you're looking down the road and you have a miles worth of yellow cans, very easy human error to drive past the house. It's easy. It happens. Doesn't matter if they're green, it just, it happens. Human error, right? Imagine when that camera immediately alerts that tablet and tells the driver, they just missed a stop. Or how about our cameras when we pull up to your stop and it tells me that there's five cubic yards of bulk, but your contract only allows for two cubic yards of bulk? Right? You guys had, had asked questions about employee retention, why this program works so well, all wrapped into one. And the majority of it is under intellectual property. A lot of it was based off other ideology that we made better and were able to, to put under our intellectual property. Every truck that has a tablet in it has direct access to look at the face of the person in there. They are no longer on an island. Our drivers are communicating with their LDCs all day long. We don't have route supervisors. It never made sense to me that you pay somebody to drive a truck down the street and then have to pay someone else in a pickup truck to go get what they missed. We don't miss stops. We had three point two million touches last month. We were at ninety-nine point nine eight seven percent. It's unheard of. Look at our calls. Our hold time, what is it, sixteen seconds? Sorry, I apologize. Seventeen second hold time when you.
I'm sorry, the most recent is.
We're getting better. Fifteen second hold time. If you call our office, you're on the phone for fifteen seconds. You have a live person that answers the phone. We don't have call centers. Call centers get bounced. They don't know garbage. They don't have any clue what's going on. Your call goes right to the LDC that's already geocoded and knows where's that, where that call's coming from. So if your house calls Priority and you have an issue, you're going to the live person that sees everything that happened in your community that day. Can tell you exactly what time that truck was there, the picture, the cameras of what trucks, truck was there. It can tell you if your child maybe forgot to put the garbage out. It tells you everything. But not only is it doing that, the cameras are getting the system smarter on a daily basis. It's telling us if maybe we, we can potentially get faster if we turn right at this stop instead of left. All of, everything is not just geocoded. Our mapping software is the liking of Amazon. So to, to take technology where it was fifteen years ago and implement it in today's standard, it, it didn't make sense. It, it, it asked too much of the customer. Every municipality and every customer we have has a portal. You guys can log in, you don't need any technology, it doesn't have to connect with your stuff. You log into the portal, and it'll tell you all day long what issues we ran into and if there's any issues at all. The whole idea is nobody calls you, period. They're calling us. Still human. You can put as many computers as you want on anything. You're still human. Mistakes are gonna happen. But it's our job to take care of them in a timely fashion. Not a ten-minute phone call, not a special number, not anything. Jody and Renee answer the phones. Three point two million touches, we had twelve hundred calls. Seven hundred of them last month were for education. The other six hundred are split between people who actually didn't have their stuff out, and some of them were missed stops. We launched Lawrence in Indiana from this pit in Clinton Township, Michigan, three weeks ago. We've had thirty phone calls on a fifteen thousand house community in three weeks. The systems don't lie. Computers are used, the AI is used to replace human error on everything it does. We are working with University of Michigan Urb Institute right now. A lot of the Carrados, they have arms on them. A lot of the drivers, if somebody's car is parked there. The AI is getting smart enough that we feel in six months to nine months that those arms will be ran by the computer, by the cameras on that truck. So now we're taking human element out, that when they're using that big claw, they're not hitting parked cars. These are things that happen in our world, right? Anything we can do to take any human error out of it, AI is replacing it, and we're doing it. Every day. I don't mind telling everybody here. Anybody can come here, any company they want. All of you guys are welcome to come here and see what we're doing. Because the technology we're working on for next year, by the time anybody could do this, we're already a year ahead of you. I have nothing, absolutely nothing to hide. Anyone in this room is welcome to come see it. So then you look at employee retention. When you have employees that are thrown a paper route sheet and told, go get this route done as fast as you can for any reason at all, they have no human interaction all day, and they're on an island. They have their own personal assistants all day long. They talk about how their kids are doing, they talk about, you know, how the baseball game went last night. That, that, that human connection keeps our employees here. We're returning six employees a month a year and, well, we launched the, the beta of this in October, so a year and two months ago. In that time, from the time we launched this till now, these are not employees that were terminated for safety issues or things of that nature, or anybody that was terminated. How many employees have we lost in the last fourteen months?
Zero.
Zero. People don't wanna leave. They wanna be cared about. They wanna know that the corporation they're working for cares about them, bringing them home as safely as possible, and giving them the tools to get through their day in a timely manner. What is that, how does that benefit your township? How does it benefit? Let's go to the maintenance side. There's three retired maintenance men in there that have been working on garbage trucks, every brand, every kind there has ever been, that know everything about everything. When a truck goes down, the LDC immediately grabs the maintenance guy that's sitting there. And he, if he cannot diagnose that truck, he's dispatching a road crew instantly. Instantly, that same maintenance mechanic has, has tablets in every one of our maintenance bays in every yard we have. And if anybody has an issue, that professional can see what truck he's working on, how to fix it properly, and any questions they may have. How does it benefit a company? When you have a missed stop, believe it or not, it's like a hundred and thirty-five dollars. It costs a fortune. You have to either go back at the end of your route, and then if it multiplies, then you see failures, and then you see instances that many townships or cities find themselves in. Technology was a great thing you, that we just looked at. It is great, but it's gotten so much better. I'm not from the waste industry. I'm not. I'm a rough carpenter by trade. I come out of auto. I manage auto plants globally. I've seen the coolest robots, the best technology you've ever seen in your life. And unfortunately, in an industry that needed to be disrupted, that needed to have technology, new thought processes, younger thinking brought in, we went in at a, at a perfect time. We have fifty municipalities, you can call any one of them. The first sixty days, there's bumps. AI's learning, we're learning, geocoding's learning. Once it's normalized, call any of them. They'll tell you. Anything they want, anything they see, it's all right there. If there is a resident that doesn't like the answer we give them and they call you, it's right there. If you took a message, you can look in the portal and see it. You'll see the email of the camera footage, you'll see exactly everything. If we did something wrong, imagine that, you'll see that. Our whole team's told, if we make a mistake, write it down. It's okay to make mistakes. That's how you get better. Exactly how you get better. We're not gonna lie to you. If we make a mistake, we'll tell you. But the whole ideology is to use artificial intelligence, bots, in anything we do to take out human error. Austin runs the pit. He's got forty employees down there that, that watch all six hundred trucks all day long in everything they do, and he can tell you by nine o'clock, you can call him, and he'll tell you when the last truck will pull out of your community. We can forecast everything we're doing. It's available. Well, a lot of it's probably not available to people because we own the rights to it, but it's available through us. I'll talk about battery power, I'll talk about CNG and my ideology on it. I'm huge on the environment, but what I'm not huge on is all-in on something we don't know that's proven. My issue with battery is those battery packs weigh sometimes eight to sixteen thousand pounds. When we live in a community where there's weights and measures on every corner, and you are now adding sixteen thousand pounds to a truck that theoretically can only do about three hundred and fifty stops a day, not sustainable. Can't do it. It's cute, but you can't do it. How are you gonna put twelve tons of garbage in a truck that weighs sixteen thousand pounds more with battery packs on it and complete a route in time? You're not. CNG, it's great. Fracking, fracking is pretty bad for the environment, but CNG itself is a cleaner fuel to burn. But you can Google it. You hit a bridge, truck blows up. Not necessarily the best, but we're getting there. I don't think anybody should go all-in on something until it's proven, otherwise we are just wasting money and time. What we are working with right now through Kettering University, and one of the big three, is hydrogen power. We'll have a hydrogen-powered truck that we will be running, yes, runs on water. And that's where Priority's gonna go. If it gets hit, it doesn't blow up. We're not fracking, we're using water. That's sustainability. And that's kind of the path we're gonna take, and I don't discredit the path other people take. I think everyone's gotta take a path for us to get better. We're just not gonna follow the person with the biggest sign and say that's the answer. And we can already see where battery's going for us right now. Huge on battery. I'd love to see them lighter. I'd love to see it work. Take sixty garbage trucks in a plant and plug them in. Then you can't get enough power to the plant. Doesn't work. They're already doing it in California. Can't do it. You can plug three or four in. We have a yard across the street from GM Orion Plant in Auburn Hills. We would need the power that's ran to that plant to charge sixty trucks. Can't do it. So we're looking, always looking to get better. We're always looking what options we have to be more sustainable. Questions about cameras. Our drivers don't have access to the cameras. Everything's locked in that room. At the end of the day, when the route's done, that stuff gets locked down each individual day. Nobody has access to it but IT. Cameras are great. They're the greatest thing in the world. We've helped the police with DUIs. We've actually caught somebody who did B and E. We've used the cameras to prove that we were innocent in cases, and we've used the cameras that showed that we weren't. It's, it's awesome when a police officer shows up to an accident scene, and you can see the camera footage right there and know who, who did something wrong. It certainly saved us a lot more than it's hurt us. We had an incident in Westland. Individual, it's a street we have to back down. You cannot physically drive down it. It's easier to back down that street. A gentleman was not having a good day and was upset that the truck was there. Started a fight with one of our drivers. Our driver was cool and calm. The guy screamed and yelled and swore like crazy. The board brought us in to ask us questions about it. They were pretty heated. We didn't say anything on the phone. We came in and we showed him the video because they wanted to meet us. They didn't want us to send it. And after that, they said, thank you for coming in. Now, there's been times where our drivers have been disrespectful, and they've needed to be taught, retrained, or terminated. Again, transparency. I'm not gonna hide anything from you. Nothing. I don't get better by not telling you the truth. That's kind of who Priority is and the way we do things. We take things to the next level. We take old technology and make it better. And we're continually using AI and bots in every system we have. I don't think that the world's ready to see a garbage truck driving down the street with no one in it. I don't think it's gonna happen in my lifetime, and even if it did, it would probably scare me to death. But what we can do is we can use that technology to make everyone safer and to guarantee that your stops get picked up and afford you the ability to call Austin at noon and say, one of the trucks is gonna be out of our city. So I, I really appreciate your guys' time. I mean no arrogance at all by what we're doing. I am absolutely in love with this business. It has been so fun to be able to come in and make a change in a business that has been so stagnant for so long. The only change it's seen is cutting the straps off the horse, and Old Henry put a mortar on the truck, and that's about it. And we're a big part of a change, and it's catching on. We, we operate this in three different states, and it's totally sustainable. Each community gets a set number of logistic driver coordinators. They handle your calls. There is no call center in Topeka, Kansas. You're not calling someone in the UP who has no, no idea what to do with garbage. You will be talking to the individual who operates every truck in your community. And we've had great success with it, and I, please, call everybody. Because if anybody has anything bad to say about it, let me know so I can get better. This team, Andrea is our chief sales officer, Paul Rothenberg, you guys know, know Paul. Paul brings thirty, forty years of experience. Andrea brings thirty years of experience. We wanted to make sure we had people from the industry, so if we were bringing ideas to the table that didn't work, that these guys could offset it, and we make a great team. Austin runs all the LDCs. It's kind of cool. I wish you guys would come out and check this out. As you can see, it's a pretty positive thing, we can get a bunch of people under thirty years old interested in working in a garbage company. I often say we're a tech company and our product is garbage. Michael French, our chief development officer, thirty, thirty years at PWC in the auto industry, best practices, Six Sigma, all of our charts, data, everything is open to you. You're welcome to see whatever you want. He has mentors that can't believe the data we're spitting out. So we're super excited about, about what we're doing and what we're doing in the industry, and honestly, I'm having the time. And honestly, I'm having the time of my life. I love it. I love all of it. So again, thank you so much for having us out. Any questions you guys have, feel free to ask. I'd love to answer them.
Okay, let's start with that. Anybody got questions? Tanya, go ahead. No, go ahead.
Sorry, a few questions that were asked earlier. If there are any spills from your trucks?
We have our own environmental team. So we own our own streets we've used that are housed at Jay Fons in Detroit. We also have one at the Romulus Yard. Our yard's literally seven miles from here. The trucks for Canton would be housed out of that yard, and we have all our spill kits. Our whole entire safety department is retired either fire marshals or firefighters, and we also have environmental studies come in quarterly to let us know best practices. Everything's handled internally.
Okay, and then so if there is oils or whatever, how long before your team will be?
They would be coming out of the ROM Yard, so 20 minutes.
Okay, so within the day.
Yeah, and the cameras catch a lot of that. The AI and the actual pressure gauges on any of the hydraulics on the trucks will hit us instantly. So hopefully, we're telling the driver, do not move your bucket, stop. So a lot of these things are avoidable. And again, it's all learning. The cameras are learning. Everything we add to it, it just consistently picks up and learns.
Okay, thank you. And then I noticed your carts are $125. If by chance, they're broken and it's the company's fault, will you replace them, or is it always up to the resident?
Anytime we we make, break a cart, right, and it's caught on camera, that it would automatically, the system would automatically send to replace that. If a resident calls in, we replace any carts we break.
Okay, and then for newer residents who may be, or residents who want an additional cart, would you take care of all that?
Okay. I'm not quite sure.
Go online or how do you?
It was written, but I believe if it falls under our responsibility, we have a whole cart maintenance. We actually have a cart LDC that watches all our cart delivery cans. So that LDC is responsible for all of the logistics on that, and all the cans get delivered.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then I'll let someone else ask more questions. Thank you.
Tanya, do you have any?
So I was just reading your packet here. And so you have a composting option that you can, you know, deliver some sort of, as I, as we taught, as we asked the previous people about having some compost delivered to us at a central location. Do you have that option?
Absolutely. There's, just like the previous company that was up, we can speak of options. If you guys need compost, we can get you compost. We take the compost out of the city, it goes to composting yards. I can't guarantee that that same bag.
Oh, no, of course not. Of course not.
Totally different if you.
Yeah. No, do you have that option?
Yes, any of the services that you would need, we would, priority would truck in the compost.
And, you know, your, as you said, like, you know, you have a customer portal and I, for for each community, like, the pictures that you take and, like, they are, like, how the communication that you have, do you have a communication with our township government, like, with the municipality?
We don't, they're not pictures. Everything's video. So even bulk piles and stuff, even on vacant lots, any blight, anytime the cameras, the trucks drive by that, they're picking that up. If the township called and said, hey, there's garbage behind a garage that we didn't see, and we had to send somebody out to take pictures of it, it would go in the portal. The portal's live. So when you look at it in the morning and then look at it two hours later, everything's in it. Any issues, anything we get on every truck that's in here.
Okay, and and that's, that's, that is a community specific, right? It's like?
Specific to the trustees only. The community itself, anytime they would call into us, if there was an issue, that that issue would be created. We have an app. We don't see a great, as cool as the app sounds, people download an app and then they're they're dealing.
No, no, I understand that. I just, I just want to understand how, you know, how you're communicating with it. It can be anything, like, it doesn't have to be an app.
We prefer old school. If we would, we would promote your residents to call us because we don't have hold times, and we want them to get to know their LDC. We want to get to know them. If they prefer to email, Austin can speak to it because he's running the pit.
Yeah, so what happens is if they, if they contact us, we log that for you. So we'll see in the portal, even if that person never touches you guys, your guys at all. But we log that for you. That way you can look. We also have functionality to create. customizable to what you're looking for. One person may be looking at a certain thing and the other.
Okay.
Kind of like the the charts you see. So those charts that you see in the back, every time our truck lifts one of your cans on the residential side, it clicks. It's like literally real time. So everything we do, every community, every piece of garbage we truck or touch goes into that KPI, and those LDCs and the bosses like Austin can see that wall all day long. We know. We know how many each truck's doing that day, and we constantly check and check and backcheck on everything we do. And we love to go into schools and talk to kids. We have full educational pieces. We work with the state of Michigan. We just help Flint secure $4 million for their recycling carts. We have people everywhere, and there's, there's grants, there's all kinds of stuff available to townships. If you have somebody that's on your side that's going, that's, that's.
And you do that? You look for things for us?
Absolutely.
Grants, opportunities?
Absolutely would.
And you said you prefer that our residents call, so we would publish your number? Is that how it works?
Absolutely. We would send out a mailer, and in that mailer, it would state, you know, please call us directly. We promise we'll answer the phone.
And how oft, do you send out mailers often?
When the contracts come out, and then generally once a year for any type of updates. And then also, we're huge in social media. We're huge TikTok, Snapchat, all that stuff. The kids in here, they run it crazy. They run the whole game. So there's a million ways to get ahold of us.
And also, you can call the LDC directly. If you're not going to a pool, you're just going to the bathroom.
They are your employee. They work for you.
Oh, how do you know what community I am from email? You're, I selected? Gotcha. Okay. How many communities are you in in Michigan?
Michigan, 40, and I think Toledo, Indiana, about 50 total, but I think Michigan's 38 to 40.
How many states are you in? Three, okay. You started here in Michigan?
Started in Michigan, born and raised in, born in Warren and township.
Dave, I'm assuming that we're going to get a cost analysis at some point at another meeting or something like that?
Correct, yeah, we're working through with finance right there with that.
Thank you.
Summer?
Thank you. For the live calls, what hours do you accept calls?
So at the LDC, these groups of people, so they don't leave until every truck's gone, and then it switches to 24/7. So there's two people that live in Michigan that work out of that office that take all emergency calls.
Okay. And how many LDCs do you have per driver?
So it's based on the community.
Or how many drivers do you have?
Yeah, so that's a very, very popular question. The algorithm will tell us what we should need, and we generally have two on standby heavier. But some communities, you can have one LDC follow 10 trucks. Some communities, it's only three. It depends on the community, their trash volumes, their service levels, and what they need. So it's kind of a little bit of a loaded question. But, you know, for for Canton itself, we'd probably go in with four to five. And I think under normalization, once the AI and everything kicks in, I would imagine probably three.
What my my staff does is they monitor it daily. So we're able to grab some people that are cross-trained. Times of, let's say, a holiday week where people are confused. So that's monitored daily, and we can shift it.
Okay, thank you.
Kate?
Thank you for the presentation. Can you provide the same data on retention rates and the average age of your current fleet?
You're welcome to everything. Absolutely. You can send a list of anything you want. We'll call it either out of payroll, HR, out of the systems in here.
So can you just provide that to us, though? I don't want to have to email you for it. I want, I would like you to just send it over.
If you want more information than that, I will absolutely.
Some people might, yes. And then I'm wondering about, to follow up on on trustee Foster's question about the the LDCs. So when it's a holiday week, and say, for example, it's everything's delayed by a day, then we have pickups usually on weekends. So will our residents be able to reach someone on the weekend if there's no?
That day. So they follow the same schedules of drivers. If there's a driver in your community, that LDC's in that room.
Okay. All right. I think that's all from me right now.
Okay. Anyone else? So, I mean, technology's great, and I'd be probably the last one to say this, and everybody would think, but in the end of the day, they want their trash picked up. So if you have three people call in, and it's in one section, do you let people know that? Do you let us know that? So we could tell the residents, hey, it's going to be delayed a year, oh, late a year. I'm sorry. Not a year, not a year. You can tell the type of calls I get here. Is it going to be delayed a week, a day, an hour? I mean, because right now, we kind of say, they'll pick it up from 6:30 AM to 8:00 PM. And believe me, once someone gets in our, you know, a little schedule and you mess with that, we hear about that, too. So what do you do if you have, like, influenza go through half your guys and they can't show up that day?
Had that happen, and we have a SEAL team, secure, evaluate, align, and leave. We have 10 drivers that are cross-trained, and as we grow, we add more. And if they're on the bench, then they'll go do other odd jobs. But we don't miss trash. We don't have, there is not, and you can ask off at the communities. We've never had once where we didn't pick up a whole section or had that issue. We don't. We backfill everything. Your garbage will get picked up.
See, now Canton Township, we have little cul-de-sacs and little things. It's easy to pass, very easy to pass, a lot of courtyards. And so if you have new drivers constantly, that's, those are the streets that get missed a lot.
So the answer to that is, is the first 60 days, you may see some of that missed. I'll be honest. I mean, there's going to be bumps that first transition period. But once the AI picks up, it doesn't matter if me or you are driving the truck. The truck tells it where to go. It's all turn by turn. You don't miss. The routes are like following a Google line. The system is getting smarter as it does the routes.
So you're going to have the same trucks on the same routes, so that knows it.
Every morning when their drivers. How that has gone through the transition period? Our AI technology, we can highlight those.
Okay.
As you all know. Subdivision, subdivision.
Right, and they can get passed easily, or something's behind a driveway or something. So you got, I mean, priority waste is growing quickly. We've seen with companies that grow quickly, sometimes, you know, you run out of resources as you expand and expand. So what will you do to make sure that doesn't happen in Canton?
So a lot of it is based on knowing what communities that you're bidding against and making sure you have those vehicles to do that community. If I, if I didn't have or the ability to have, which we already have the trucks, to do your community, I would tell you. So I pre-ordered trucks last year. We have some communities starting in the next six months. It's all about forecasting, your ability to do that. And we also have a pretty good supplier, and we have some pretty good relationships with companies like Penske and other folks that are ordering night transfer, people in other states that order a lot of trucks. And we grew all through COVID. We grew 350 employees through COVID. I didn't have the ability to go, oh, I can't pick your stuff up because of COVID. We grew through that transition. The companies that survive and get better are the companies who can figure it out. We have not had that problem. We forecast the communities that are coming out to bid, and with our growth, we haven't had any issues with. We use, there is science to it, but a lot of it is just looking at what you have and your success rate, and the job you're doing, and the customer satisfaction, and kind of knowing if you're going to be able to get, gain that community, or if that's not a community you want. And there are communities that went out to bid that we didn't bid.
So for your single stream, you have single stream recycling?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you pick up styrofoam?
As part of our single stream. So even if it went into the system, if it's less than 10%, at the, at the MRF, it would go through.
Do you have food composting at all? Food composting?
No, you know, it was interesting. You guys were talking about that. Republic is doing some big food composting in Las Vegas. Makes sense. They're doing some stuff in California. I think in Michigan, the trend's kind of set by Ann Arbor. But to speak about food composting in an RFP that doesn't have food composting in it, it's kind of premature. If you guys wanted that system of food composting, the Orca machines that they're talking about, we've used those in casinos. We've seen it. We're educated on it. But to put a true food composting program in your township, you'd have to have that that area to take it. And I just don't see it here yet in Michigan. That doesn't mean that if it was here, we would be open to working with the township on figuring out how to do that. But I, I think for right now, we're just not there yet.
And we actually do have a food composting program. We have bins stationed in various parts, and the residents take, take it there, and the company comes and picks it up.
Sure. And if, if you're happy with that company, or if we need to be that company, I'll gladly pick the food composting up, but on a massive program where you went house to house, we'll kind of see how legislation works and what they're going to force us to do. Under Article Part 115 that they just changed, there is some language about it, but it really is not specific to what their, what their ideology is or what we're going to be responsible to do. In certain areas of California, you have no choice. You have to do it. Certain areas of Canada, you have to do it. I mean, but it would be what you mandated and what cost is that. So we, if possible, we'll do.
Okay. Now, do, so I think you already heard. So we hold six Canton cleanups each year for residents to drop off garbage, recycling, and hazardous waste. They're important to your renters who may not have access to curbside recycling. If chosen, would your company be able to provide this service?
Sure. We would just need locations and what bins to set up or what equipment to set up. And it, I don't know for sure it was in the RFP. Yeah, if it was, then. Pre-bid meeting, yeah. Okay, I knew, I remember seeing it somewhere. Yeah.
And how do you handle the bulk pickup? When your truck goes by, it takes a picture and sends another truck, or?
Well, it depends under the contract, what bulk pickup items are allowed. If bulk is at the curb, generally, and it's allowed under the contract, the bulk items get picked up. If somebody remodels their house and empties it all on the curb, it immediately sends a picture, or the camera immediately grabs it, sends it to the LDC. The LDC sends it through the portal and also calls. So that's something that's a little, there's layers of what we would call and let you know what we ran into versus just standard course of business.
All right. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? No? All right, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Yeah, if you would hang around for more questions. Thanks. We have GFL.
I want to say it's a click to move through. Okay, good evening. Sam Kerr-Magnon with GFL. I have Rick Van An with us, the Regional Vice President, Mary Dean, our Customer Service Manager, and Jeff Gomez works with me on municipal work. We have a slide presentation for you that we'll go through, and like the others, we'll answer your questions and talk about some service challenges that we've had. that we've had in the last, last year. Jeff, you got the slide? Well, first thing I'd like to start with is, we've been your service provider for a number of years now. And we've recently put a new management team in place that's in charge of servicing Canton Township. With that, with that move, that recent change that's been in place for less than a month here, where our intention is to provide proper oversight and supervision that will bring the Canton service level back to what you expect and what's in line with your contract. I'm going to tell you some things that are only words if they're not applied. But these are the things we're working on now. Engagement, accountability, values, obligation, conformance, and stability. We intend to bring the service back and have brought the service back recently to levels that you would find acceptable. If you continue to service with us, we'll ensure those levels stay at that point. Your specifications, your bid specs, as you know, can continue with the service as it is or it can be enhanced to a cart program. Of course, you go to a cart program. We're going to bring in those residential front loaders to service those carts, and we provide the carts with our pricing. GFL is, in Michigan, your only vertically-aligned service provider. We have landfill disposal options, which you very well may need in the near future. We have transfer stations. We have compost facilities owned and operated by GFL. We also have our own recycling facilities. I believe we've got seven in the state of Michigan, two here locally, one brand-new in Pontiac, another one in here on Township where your material goes currently. We think carts provide a cleaner environment on collection day, greater ease of bringing your materials to the curb, and more efficient with single-driver trucks where we can have displaced the loaders and have an automated, fully automated-type truck to pick those materials up. What you see on the screen here is very similar to what we operate now in and around Metro Detroit. This would be what the truck would look like servicing Canton Township on your trash routes. Short video. That truck is the widely-accepted option for cart service. And to answer your question that I heard asked a couple of times about bulk service, bulk service would also be collected with that truck, providing it's a reasonable quantity. For instance, if this chair is set out next to the cart, it would be put in the truck at the same time. And you move on down the road. Therefore, no need to run a separate truck down the road and waste traffic and time for collection. Here is the recycle truck, automated recycle truck, that is generally used by us in and around Metro Detroit. This would be, we'd have a fleet of these upon a new contract for your recycling service. You'll see our MRFs, as I talked about earlier. We have a brand-new MRF in Pontiac, Michigan. If you want to see technology in action and state-of-the-art abilities to recycle your recycle volume, this is something to see. We've taken and done tours for the last seven or eight months. Everybody that's gone there has been very, very impressed. We have artificial intelligence, meaning scanners and sort, optical sort machines there. It's an impressive operation. Where GFL spent close to $40 million to operate and build this facility. It's our commitment to recycle your material and material in and around Metro Detroit. GFL is used to technology. We've heard a ton of technology discussion tonight. Technology does come into play in many ways. It supports our route manager, a live person on the street that interacts with our drivers, with our trucks, and has face-to-face personal discussion as well. The route manager is able to discuss issues and talk with your residents as needed. And it's a friendly face of GFL on the street and the neighborhood. We believe that technology should assist the supervisors in the field and not completely replace them. So that's our, that's our take on technology. Next slide, Rick. We also have truck cameras in our trucks. Our system is called Lytics. There's pictures going out of the window, pictures back into the driver in the cab for safety purposes. This also can be researched to see if somebody's trash was out. Now, we're not here to say, oh, you're a bad guy, you didn't put your trash out. Or you're a good guy, you put your trash out later the wrong way. We're not interested in that. We're interested in picking up what we need to pick up and getting back on track the way you would expect us to collect trash in Canton Township. Customer service. We've got a customer service center in Southfield, Michigan. I'll ask Mary to come up and tell you a little bit about our customer service center.
So we do have a call center. And we also have a dedicated line for Canton Township that I do know is posted on your website. Residents do have 24/7 support. They can access that on our website, which is the gflenv.com/support. And they can enter their own ticket even after the call center has closed. That ticket will go directly to the route supervisor's tablet in the truck. We also have a customer service mailbox that we have a two-hour turnaround time, but guaranteed within 24 hours if it's a holiday weekend. They can also go to, Canton has their own system right now that you man. But depending on a contract, that can also be integrated with our Q Alert system, which would open a ticket 24/7. This is what it looks like when you go to our website to enter your own service issue complaint question. You would put in your own home address. This is only visible to the resident and the customer entering the information. It drops a PIN for the driver on the tablet for the route supervisor. The customer would then request if they want a text or an email confirmation, which is what you would see on the right. This customer chose a text. And on the right is the text information. And once that's recovered, this, this does time and date stamp when the ticket was opened and when it's been recovered. And it will send an alert directly back to the customer regarding, with the choice of their form of communication. This is what the Q Alert intake process looks like from the call center side. It is the exact same ticketing process that a customer can utilize on our website. If you call the call center at the dedicated line for Canton, we take down your information, enter it, put in a missed pickup. It completely bypasses everything and goes directly to the route supervisor. And that is timestamped with the time the ticket was opened. And it's instantaneously sent to the route supervisor, and the confirmation goes to the customer. And here, you see the PIN drop of that customer's exact address. So if we've still got a truck that's right around the corner, he's headed right back there because it's real time. This is what our route supervisors see on their tablet. So the addresses on the list are what he has for his missed pickups in that particular area. And then it's going to drop the PIN from where he is located to that missed pickup. Jeff can speak to the GPS tracking in that truck?
So I'm going to, I'll talk quickly. Good evening, everyone. Jeff Gomez, GFL. You know, in creating today's presentation, being your current provider, we had to kind of come up with ideas of what we can do differently. One thing that we want to offer to the township is that we would like to be more transparent and open up our GPS tracking, create a geofence layer around the township borders, and allow you access to see where our trucks are located within the boundaries of the township at all times. If you want to flip to the next one here. Going into a fully automated carded program would allow us, one, as Sam touched on, to bring new equipment into the equation. It would also allow us, from a routing standpoint, to make right-hand-drive routing. Our trucks would be right at center at all times of the street, not causing any traffic violations right now with dual siding. We would also be creating, like, logistic benchmarks, consistent starting points that we would share with the township on where our trucks are starting at 7:00 a.m. and where they would be finishing. So in our transparency of opening up our GPS for you to view, you would also be able to kind of see the progress that we're showing on our routes at all times. You can kind of see on the next slide here, the maps that our drivers would be engaging in with the right-hand turns and creating some consistency throughout their day of where they're at at all times. Unless you guys had anything else, that we're open for questions.
Thank you. John, why don't we start with you? Because we've had GFL. What, I mean, when I come in in the morning, I'm looking for GFL emails, which I get a lot of. But what are you seeing mostly? Because a lot of them get routed to you. What do you, what do you see needs improving? Remember to use the microphone, please. John? Thanks. Thank you.
All right, does that work? There we go. So the last year and a half, two years probably, good 18 months for sure, the biggest challenge has been for, and I don't like to throw anybody in the bus, but the facts are the facts, that retaining people and being able to have, be fully staffed has created, you know, some issues with GFL on the service level side. The township worked with GFL. We proposed to help out in the best way we could to help our residents. And we went to, the biggest thing was compost. We went to Saturdays to pick up compost to help GFL manage to get that done, which is a huge change for our residents, right? So we were asking people, don't put your compost out, only put out on Saturdays. And that was a huge challenge. And it still is. It's, the season's winding down. And to their, to GFL's benefit, they've changed some of their operations and moved that compost out of the, where they were doing it before. So the last six weeks has been, six weeks has been wonderful. But leading up to that, it's been a nightmare. Communication across the board, this is not a secret. We've had multiple meetings with their leadership teams since I've been here in Canton. Probably had three or four different general managers at GFL. So some of the stability has been an issue, too. So Sam mentioned that they have a leadership change. You know, it's only been in place for six, eight, six, seven weeks, whatever it's been. But, I mean, there's some improvement there. So that's, you know, that's probably the long and short of it. Customer service, it's hit and miss. You know? Residents call, I think everybody here on this board knows that a resident will call. And, you know, they may get a customer service rep that knows what they're doing or cares what they're doing, I guess, and gives them the correct information. Or we have other ones that don't have a clue and give our residents misinformation, which just creates more work for everybody on staff to undo that misinformation to get them the correct information, so.
Yes, I know. So a lot of our residents, I mean, they call us a lot, and we, we track everything. I don't know, some of our community spots are okay. I don't know, but a lot of them seems to always have issues. My street being one of them, which means that I have people at my door or calling me and saying, pointing, yes, I know, my trash is here still. So, you know, you're, you're very nice people. But, but my question is, is, we've heard this before. You know, words are one thing, but we've had management changes. My son lives in Livonia. There's no issues there, he says. You know, other people I talk about there. But what's going to change about saying this again to us? What are you going to change?
Well, as I, as I said earlier, one of the first things I said was about the proper oversight and supervision of your community, Canton Township. Yes, John, I got to admit, we've had a series of general managers. We've had a series of route managers. And all of those did not fit properly. And the price to be paid for that was poor service in Canton Township. I've been brought back in to assist to get that right. I like to think that I can make a difference and am making a difference. You've seen when we moved that yard waste to an Arbor Hills location back just before the yard waste really became heavy and busy during the fall. I think we were very successful servicing your yard waste, which shows we can put this thing back on track and will put it back on track, whether it's just the remainder term of this contract or for the future. We will put this back on track. I'm overseeing your job now. It will get back on track. Believe me when I tell you. And Marie, I don't know how to say it any better than that. It will get back on track.
Even just like communication, communication is a big one. We don't know if someone's garbage is missed until they call us. We should be told, hey, we had a new driver, or they called in sick, and we missed this whole block. I mean, whole sections. We should be told that because we look like fools when we're called and we have no idea.
That goes back to the accountability. I know that there's an email sent at night from your route manager, Nick. And he'll say, well, we didn't finish section one or two or three, for whatever the reason, whatever the reason happens to be. Sometimes I'm not actually completely accurate. And again, that's a focus that I have dialed right into here recently. You shouldn't have seen, you shouldn't be seeing any problems at all here in the last couple of weeks regarding that. So again, it's something I'm focused on. And it looks suspect because you're saying, oh, we're out to bid. Of course, they're going to focus on the service now. Well, that's not who I am. It's not what I stand for. So those problems are going to be fixed.
So any board questions? I know we've all gotten emails and calls. Diane?
Thank you again for your presentation, like everybody else. Will the cart costs can stay 75? Or what will the cart cost be if we do go with you? Because we do have the recycling carts, but we would need the refuge bins.
The cart cost is built into your cart proposal? So there's no additional cost for that? There is an additional cost, I think you asked the question earlier, if someone wants to buy an additional cart? Jeffrey, what was that number?
75 for a one-time fee, $75 for an additional recycled cart, $85 for an additional trash cart.
For additional, okay.
One-time fee includes delivery.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Kate?
Yes, could you provide the same information on retention rates of your employees and also the, the age of the fleet? Average age of the fleet?
I wrote that down, yes.
Okay. Also, you had mentioned that there was a change in management within the last month or so. And just to tell you, my neighborhood, as of three weeks ago, has had issues with recycled pickups. One week, part of the neighborhood was missed, and they didn't come back till Saturday. Our day is Thursday. And then the very next week, the recycling truck broke down in front of my next-door neighbor's house. And it was there for at least three hours, maybe four, sitting there waiting for a team to come. And, well, I think eventually they towed it away. But, and then, of course, it hadn't completed the route either. So I just really don't understand, if you think a change in management, I mean, I know it hasn't been that long, but your words are hollow. know it hasn't been that long, but your words are hollow. It's like, there have still been issues.
I, I don't mean them to be hollow. I, I said a month, three, four weeks is what I've been there. So, I'm back there. These type of problems are in the process of being fixed. This truck that sat in front of your house was probably broke down, obviously needed to be towed.
It was broke down, but it sat there for hours, and I was really glad that it happened after 4:00 p.m. Not for the driver's sake, because I went out and talked to him, because I felt bad for him. I wanted to make sure he was warm enough, and he was very pleasant. But, if the school bus had needed to go down my street that day, it wouldn't have been able to get through, because the truck was blocking the road. And I think that the truck also said it was property of City of Auburn Hills on it, so it had come from far away, and I don't know how far away the tow truck had to come from, but that seemed like an excessive amount of time for that truck to be sitting there.
Well, I would, I would agree. We'd like to get them out of there quickly, but if it was broke down, and tow trucks do take a little time to get, but we got it out of there. The Auburn Hills decal that you saw on the truck probably is an Auburn Hills hauling license. It was, it's been put on many trucks through the years. That's probably what you were seeing there.
It said City of Auburn Hills on it.
City of Auburn Hills hauling license.
No, it said property of City of Auburn Hills.
I won't, I won't, I won't fight with you about it, but I'll look it up. I don't, I don't know that we have that.
Just, you know, I, I would like to know, really, how you're going to make this different this time.
I'm sorry. I was, I'm sorry. Through the things I've told you, I can only tell you these are words, and the words will translate to the expectations.
Okay. Expectations don't make it real, though.
Sorry?
Expectations don't make it real.
It'll be real.
That's one of the biggest reasons I wanted to come down tonight, and I've met with John and the team, heard some of the frustrations. No secret, we've had a lot of outside influences in our Wayne yard. I think the beauty of our setup and our vertical integration and our capabilities within the Detroit metro area, we have over 1,300 drivers, over 700 routes every day. We have the ability to leverage the metro area, to bring resources in. We've done that. I would tell you some of the, and it's not an excuse, and please don't take it this way, a lot of the outside challenges we faced would decimate a lot of companies without our resources. And we've not been perfect, right? But our goal is to improve that communication. We're going to service through people, and you talk about turnover, right? And technology's great. At the heart of it all, if you don't have drivers, you don't have trucks, and you're not picking up the trash, we're not doing what we need to do for you all. We've had a lot of communities in the Detroit metro area. I think we've serviced over 70 municipalities. Lot that are renewing with us, a lot that have been with us for a long time. We've grown immensely over the last five to six years. We're the fourth largest in the United States. That doesn't come without the ability to overcome some of these challenges that you're talking about and get back to a level of excellent service that you expect. So, we fully intend to do that, and we're going to bring all the resources we have to bear to make that happen. The leadership changes we've made, Sam has an amazing amount of experience in the Detroit metro area and knows Canton like the back of his hand, and that matters. So do our supervisors, and we're getting drivers. We have a full team of recruiting that continuously recruits with over 1,300 people. We do have a large amount of turnover and volume, but that's improving significantly. And at the heart of all of it, as Sam talked about, our values, it's the culture of the organization, right? And in any organization, and, and I love how Mr. Stamper mentioned coming from the outside, I too came from the outside and spent about 25 years in CPG and automotive and went through the world-class manufacturing journeys, lean journeys, and, you know, at the end of that, technology's great, but it's people that really make the difference. We all have trucks. We all have technology. We all have leaders. It's about the people that we have and how we lead and the culture that we have that is going to make the difference. That's exactly what we're going after in Wayne and what we're going to create, and we have the leverage in Detroit like no one else to be able to make it happen. So, I just wanted, and again, it's words, and it's words because we've been doing the work, right? Our, our body of work is on display, not perfect at all. Everybody else, not on display. They can talk. So, we get that we're not perfect. Our goal is to respond better and to return to excellent service, and you've seen a lot of that this year.
I think the last time you were here, you talked about issues that you had and challenges with hiring people. Where are you at on that, and what percentage are you fully staffed?
Yeah. At the moment, we are fully staffed. There might be one or two positions here or there across, again, 1,300. We're largely staffed. We're finishing up yard waste everywhere. Our goal is to spend the next four months, fine-tuning, training, developing our team to be better next year across the whole metro area.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Steven?
Yeah, thanks, guys. I guess first I would state that I think it's important that we explore the possibilities of utilizing new technologies like have been presented tonight. I'll be interested to see at what cost financially they come in. You know, in the end, we know that we have a community that doesn't tolerate large increases, and if we do, we need to deliver on the service. As Trustee Foster said, I, I remember two years ago, coming out of the pandemic, challenges in all industries in hiring. So, I kind of understood at that time the, the struggles, finding people to drive trucks, or supervisors, or call center, whatever. I can understand that, but it's been at least two years since then, and I, I do think things have improved to an extent, but probably not to where they need to be or where we expected them to be. So, how, how have the challenges of hiring, I, I know you just answered this for, for summer, but how have they ebbed and flowed over the last three years, would you say?
Well, to, to your point, coming out of COVID and getting through COVID, right, definitely a challenge. We have not only a corporate recruiting team that, that helps support us in any way we need supported, but now we have a full team locally in the Michigan area focusing on nothing but drivers and technicians through, through learning, through turnover. We've figured out better compensation programs, greatly improved our technician turnover and our driver turnover. I don't see staffing as an issue for us moving forward.
How many of your, roughly, how many of your, in percentage-wise, of your communities do automated for both trash and recycling?
Greater than 50%.
Greater than 50%, and I don't know which communities you have around here, but any around here that do it?
Recently transitioned to City of Farmington Hills to a fully automated trash.
Farmington Hills.
Very similar to what our FFP was written for.
Okay. Director Norwood, when we take a look at this, I'd be interested, whether it's GFL or other providers, to understand in Western Wayne County what roughly is the percentage of automated trash versus the, still having their own barrels for that, so when we evaluate.
We'll do.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
When you look at the data of the missed pickups, it seems like Tuesdays and Wednesdays are really hard-hit, so I don't know what it is about those dates, but that's when we seem to get most of our calls. Do you have any reasoning for that or explanation?
I, I can't, I can't say that I do. I don't know what the, what the prior problems were with Tuesday and Wednesday collection. I would, I would venture that it stemmed from a Monday problem that trans, transitioned a Tuesday and Wednesday. I can't, I don't have the answer to that question. Sorry.
Any other questions on the board? John?
Yeah, it seems like the last couple of months, Mondays have been an issue, for whatever reason, and that rolls into Tuesday and Wednesday. Takes till the end of the week for them to get caught up. It's a trend that we've been seeing for a while, and I don't know if they can speak to it, but Monday seemed to be a bad day, and it just carries on to the rest of the week for them to get caught up.
That's what I was, I was guessing that was the issue, but I don't know. I have not been at the site, so I'm glad to look at that, but if that's been the issue, we'll fix that too.
Did you have anything, or?
I don't, I don't have anything to add to this at this point.
So, I guess what we should do, so we have some residents that want to, oh, Diane, did you want to have anything? Oh, sorry. We have some residents that wanted to ask some questions. What would be the best way to do this? Just have each one sit at a microphone and they can come up for public comment? The, oh, the residents? Oh, yeah. Where, where should the company sit? How do we do this so they could be at a microphone? Maybe, so GFL's there. I don't know if you have any extra microphones.
We can use the board table also.
Okay. Okay, we'll give you a microphone. Okay. Okay, good. There we go. Okay. All right, so, we're going to give, who do we have? So, we're going to give like three minutes, three or four, I'll give four minutes for questions from residents. So, who do we have? Okay, go ahead, Diane.
Okay. Good evening to anyone, everyone. My name is Daniel McCausen. I've been a 42-year resident of this community, and I'm going to give you something real quick, real fast, so I don't use all my time up. I have a home down south. I have automated trash. We pay 260 outside of our normal taxation per annum. We get two-week, two, two times a week pickup, fully automated. First day's can only. Second day is what we call every day. We get everything, bulk, everything. Goes out to the curb, fully automated. Love it. We get two tons per year at a transfer station. That's huge. Any day it's open. Okay. Come back home, it's a disaster. The trash in this community is horrible. I'm not going to berate anybody. Whoever the successful bidder is of this contract needs to keep this in mind. This is mandatory. First of all, of all the, of all the vendors, are you willing to sign an agreement that says the contract is not assumable or assignable? So, if the big merge happens again, nobody can buy your company out. Second of all, like was mentioned, is there, is there a get-out clause if what was promised is not delivered? Automated carts, mandatory. How many per home? What size? Direct contacts for service. No webmail, no call centers that are located somewhere on the other side of the planet. Somebody that we can call and say, "Look, there's a problem. I'm on currently once-a-month trash. I'm getting picked up once a month. Not here to berate nobody. Let's look forward, not backwards." Here's the biggest one, the ability for citizens to dispose, either cleanup days or a transfer station or a simple roll-off located somewhere. There's garbage land all over the community. I saw three bags on my way here tonight. I live on the main street. Everybody's throwing their garbage out because they're frustrated, and it gets run over. Simple cans are gone. We got to go automated. There's just no way. That's mandatory. How much at the bulk? I see a lot of families, there's a lot of young families in this community. They generate a lot of trash. How much, give them guidelines. How much can they put at the curb? Do they have to buy an additional can? Would there be a fee for the additional can? Again, would this community be Canton-based, the yard, or would they have a close facility? Hydraulic leaks, that's another one. I can't tell you how many times at the end of my driveway I've come out in the morning and there's split oil. There's a, I'm, I'm a truck mechanic by trade. I could tell you what's going on with them. It's, it's rubbing and wearing and fitting leaks and everything else. So, the, the biggest, you know, the biggest misnomer of the trash, I, I was owner-operator tow truck driver, tow truck owner for a number of years. It's the presentation of your equipment. If you go down the road and everything's dragging behind it, yeah, you're going to get stopped by the Waymaster. If you're polished up and you're looking good and you're sharp, he's going to look for the one that's dragging something. So, that's the whole thing in a nutshell. We just, like, like you all say, we want the trash picked up, and we're not getting it. So, we simply need the trash picked up, and that's where we're at with this whole thing. So, whoever the successful bidder is, we simply need those, I don't think those are too much to ask for. We're looking to get the trash picked up. But we, I see people in frustration. They have no place to go with the trash. I've been taking my trash in, I'm taking, I'm taking trash to my paying can right now in a commercial building and throwing my trash out weekly, putting it in my car. I think it's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thanks. So, why don't we, GFL, do you want to comment on that? Have any response?
No, I, so, several of your questions are good, right? Obviously, however the contract is written, we're going to bid on that appropriately, right, for some of the terminology you're talking about in the contract. To the service issues, we hear you, and I think we understand that. We know we're not perfect. We've got to, we've got to drive improvement. I think that's a big part of what you heard from us, right?
I can accept that. I can accept that. You've got, you've got good guys. Your guys are not bad people. I think what it is, is the level of frustration that just gets them frustrated. But it's amazing, because I live on the, I live on Hagerty, right? It's amazing how many trucks can go by and not pick that trash up. To me, that's the disappointing part. Now, you'll have a guy who's not even in his district. He'll stop and pick that trash up. That, that gives me, you know, when I, when I call in, I say, "Don't yell at the driver. It's not his fault," right? So, I've been a driver for a long time, and I know how it is to be a driver. I know how it is to be accountable, but whoever wins this, whoever wins this, those are, those are pretty much the pulse of this community, what we're looking for, right there.
Thank you, thank you. Do you want to answer priority waste?
We aren't the current provider in Canton, so to answer the questions that would pertain to us, the contracts and the RFP, the way it was put out, we bidded exactly to that, and any outside language would be up to the trustees to add, but, you know, we stand behind our work. So, if it falls that pattern, then we would agree to it.
And then, I'm sorry.
Would, would all three of these, would all three of these bidders agree that they would not assign or assume that contract to another entity if they were to be bought out?
Okay.
Would I agree to that? Yes.
Thanks, Mr. McCausen. We're going to get Titan over here.
Yes, yes, and yes, all three of your questions.
Okay. So, you guys have a microphone there. Okay.
So, there's, there's a, there's a couple of different kinds of entities that comprise hauling companies, private equity companies that are...
Use a microphone. Thanks.
Sorry.
Private equity companies that, you know, build, 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 very often low bid, because they're trying to accumulate contracts, and then they sell them. And we understand, we're the gentleman, your pain point. We're a publicly traded company, so that isn't going to happen. You're welcome to buy stock, and you're welcome to sell stock, but that necessarily isn't going to happen. Companies, you know, you could research companies that are private equity companies. The longevity is roughly five to seven years before they will do what you say you're indicating might happen. So, just kind of do your research on that, would be my recommendation. Well, I know that. Well.
Thanks.
Yeah, well, so...
All right. Okay, thanks, Mr.
Well, so the point is, is that if you do your research, you can kind of get a barometer on who might be gobbled up by somebody, and that might, if that puts you more at ease.
Thanks, Mr. Thank you. Yeah, we can talk some more afterward. Are there, are there residents that have questions? Okay. Mr. Miller, can you go to the podium? Put a microphone, please.
Publicly owned company.
Mr. Miller, could you go to the podium, please?
Okay.
Thank you. Talk in the microphone.
Correct me if I'm wrong, a publicly traded company can be bought out. Good examples, Ford Motor Good examples, Ford Motor Company, the family controlled it for years, no secret. Addressing these folks, trash pickup, I understand during the virus, the virus and that, and labor, getting a hold of labor, i- is a problem. But when you sign that contract, that dotted line, that's it. Good example, Jack Walsh with GE. EPA come over, he polluted the Hudson River, for example. Whatever it was, twenty-five million, fifty million, billion. They come back four or five years later and we want more. There, you signed on the dotted line. What are you going to do about fuel costs when fuel cost goes up? And these guys with their high-tech here, some of these high-tech cars are not working very well. When they're driving by themselves, they've lost control. I like to see, and I got relation, uh, mechanics and stuff, when you've got eighty-five thousand pounds of trash or a truck, how, how does that electric motor or battery going to do that? And what do you do with the battery afterwards? You know? Yeah. If you're, if you're running an electric truck. Yeah, all right. Some of the trucks, if there's a breakdown, for example, with you, if there's a breakdown, how quick can you come and get it? Some of those engines, if they're diesel, they're ten to twenty grand, and they quit. When the fluid blows a hole, they quit right there. How quick are you going to get out and clean it up and, and have a tow wagon? Do you have a tow wagon in your yard right there to pick it up? There was a guy over here that had a contract with a township and lost it. He had equipment to pick that up, and he's right here in Wayne evidently. So I'd like to know what seems to be the problem with, and the cost on this, and I want to know where the compostings come from. We had a composting plant here in Canton, and it skunked to high heaven. Ann Herbert, they were here, some of the folks, one of their environmental people, "Oh, we got a compost." Where is it? In the center of the dump. Where, how do you know what's stinking? And over there in Salem Township, there's a problem. That's those fault.
Thank you. GFL, you want to comment on anything that he had said?
The electric and gas trucks are a non-issue for us. We have a diesel fleet, right? We have our own composting facility at the landfill. Um, I happen to believe Salem Township is very pleased with us in Salem Township.
Think priority waste?
Uh, again, we don't run electric trucks, sir, um, and we take our composting to several composting yards, which are not located in your community. Uh, we do also run diesel, and you are correct, even though we have our own tow trucks, there are municipalities that sign contracts, and if those tow trucks hook our truck, there's nothing we can do about it. And we're trying to fight that because we sometimes get there quicker, and even if we get there quicker, if there happens to be a police officer there, we have to unhook it, and they make us use that. Um, it's not under my control. Um, and as far as the, uh, environmental, we have our own environmental crews, and that question was, uh, well, our yard's eleven minutes away, so I, I, if they're on-site, they would drive down and.
Mr. Miller, you had, Mr. Miller, you had your four minutes. Thank you. Okay, continue.
So I answered the question.
Mr. Miller, you could, Mr. Miller, you could talk afterwards. You've had your four minutes. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, I believe I answered his question.
Okay, thank you. How about Titan? Oh, could you please use the microphone? Thank you.
Yeah, regarding, uh, electric vehicles, we've done a lot of research, a lot of testing on our own, field testing, that is, and we're absolutely committed to electric. Uh, we run diesels and will continue to. We run electrics and will continue to, and, uh, we don't think there's any drawback whatsoever. In fact, a lot of advantages, both in pollution and noise, uh, for the township. So we're committed. Um, if it makes any difference, we don't try to follow anyone, but the largest provider of services in the waste, uh, field, not here today, but Waste Management, has hundreds of these vehicles in the routes experimenting, uh, every day, and, uh, that's the direction their CEO says they're moving as well.
All right, any other residents, additional residents? Okay, Emma. So Emma is our Canton resident advocate, and she gets a lot of the calls.
Hello. First, I would just like to thank you for the presentations. Um, as Ms. Graham Hudak said, my name is Emma. I work as a resident service advocate with Canton Township. Um, one thing that I am hearing on a consistent basis from residents are instances of minor property damage. Um, when a truck may take out somebody's basketball hoop or run through the yard. Um, so I would like to hear from each company what you would do in those instances, how you will interact with our residents when those problems come up.
Thank you. GFL, do you want to start?
Certainly. I think, uh, Sam talked about, we have Lytics and are installing Lytics in our, our entire fleet. We're doing so really from a training standpoint. I know, um, some folks have said it's a gotcha program. Drivers don't like that. Totally agree. In a lot of cases, that's the case. Uh, we want our drivers to be professional, to be safe, right, and we use that tool because it gives you, albeit reactive, a, a immediate video feedback, and we can learn from that. And we can improve how our drivers, um, you know, service communities and stay safe and keep the public safe. I think that is paramount in all of the technology that we have. Uh, as far as communication and dealing with that, ideally, obviously, we want to avoid those instance, instances, right? So we always have follow-up. We go back through driver training if we need to. We spend a lot of time in the beginning with the behind-the-wheel program and how we train people. Uh, with every incident, we do follow-up locally at the site with the drivers, with the driver teams, you know, everybody learns from each other, um, with the goal of reducing our incidents, and I will tell you year over year, we've done that, and we continue to try and drive that.
Thank you. Priority?
Yeah, it's a great question. So what we found is, we have six, uh, gentlemen that are a maintenance group. We, even with all the technology, you know, driveway, grass, medians, uh, park cars, sometimes maneuvering, you can wreck grass, you can hit mailboxes. Uh, incidental damage, uh, as soon as it's reported, goes immediately into, um, dispatch, uh, and those crews are dispatched out to repair it. With having the camera systems and having the technology, it does allow us to go back for training or to prove if we did it in the first place. Quick incident in Bloomfield Township, it was, the FedEx truck drove across this lady's lawn, blew out three of her sprinkler heads. We were able to look at it and actually show that as our truck was passing by, it was not a gotcha either. It was, we worked with the homeowner. She was able to get a hold of FedEx. We ended up having our guys fix it, and I don't know how she ended up, what she did, but by having an in-house maintenance or quasi-construction crew that does follow things around, because roll-off trucks outside a residential, those guys, you know, um, although they go through the training, these mistakes happen. They're ran by humans. Accidents happen. So to be able to dispatch your own internal construction crew and fix those problems right away, it's been very successful for us.
Thank you. And Titan?
Yeah, unfortunately, um, to Todd's point, I mean, accidents do happen. Uh, I don't think a lot of our drivers, or drivers in general, are trying to be negligent, so uh, in this case, this is why we think cameras are important, along with supervisor always in the city. I think it's important that they interact with the residents if there is an issue, so the call comes in or however it's relayed to us. We send our supervisor to that site the next day. He goes through, talks to the resident, and we either fix the issue in-house. Uh, any damage that's done, we hire somebody, or we even will let the resident make that decision and hires who they prefer to and coordinate on their, at their leisure, at their time, but, and then we pull the driver in, have the discussion with them, but that's basically how we would handle this situation. It doesn't go on, on, you know, ignore it, basically. We want to jump on it right away.
Okay, thank you. Does the board have any other questions of the companies? Treasurer Slavens has a public comment to read. Yeah, right now.
Right now?
For public comment, yeah.
I had a resident come to my window about a week ago, and I had mentioned that we were going to be having this, um, study session with, uh, the three vendors that were going out to bid for, um, you know, for this, and, uh, he was unable to attend, but he did want, he said, "I'll email you, uh, something I want you to read," so I'll read it to you. And it is from Robert and Belinda Vecdor. "We live on a main street, and it seems like they're having a hard time picking up our trash. They either do one side of the road and leave the other side not picked up, or get our garbage one week and then don't pick up the recycling that week. Every other week, one or the other is left. We notify the website. Sometimes they respond, and sometimes they don't. If they can't pick up the trash, they should provide a place, uh, at the Sheldon Road DPW for us to dispose of it as well as our yard waste. Or maybe, um, they should become automated as the recycling trucks are." And again, that's from Robert and Belinda Vecdor, and they live on Geddes Road.
Okay, thank you. Does the board have any final comments? No? Okay, great. So can I have a motion to adjourn? And if you want to continue talking, we can, but at this point, we will conclude the meeting if we have a motion to adjourn.
I will support that motion.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Clerk Seagerest. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you for the presentations. Thank you, everyone.